Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of September 24, 2009. Would you please rise and join us for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic of which we stand, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. I stand corrected. It turns out it's 2019. Could we please have a roll call, Bridget?
Yes, Commissioner Hernandez.
I am present.
Commissioner Polgar.
Here.
Commissioner Riddick.
Here.
Commissioner Vice Chair Benjamin.
Here.
And Chair Holt is absent this evening.
Okay, thanks. So if there are no proposed changes to the agenda, seeing none, I'd like to begin with a review and approval of the minutes of the September 10, 2019 meeting. Colleagues. Commissioner Hernandez.
I just wanted to specifically comment on the Planning Commission comments on page three of the document. I know that we had 433 Laurel was the project that we called out where they have drainage issues. We just wanted to make sure that specific property with the underground parking was called out. And it's across the street from the new project that's being proposed. So we just want to make sure the city engineer does a survey of that, sees during the wet season, the standing water that appears in the garage, and makes sure that the planning for the new project takes that into account and sort of is thinking about things in a thoughtful way. So it was 433 Laurel was the project.
I do remember you discussing the water issue. Anything else? If not, could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
With the change that you've mentioned.
With the change.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The next period subject we're doing tonight is the oral communications or public comment. This is the time in our meeting when a member of the public who wishes to address the Planning Commission on any subject which is not on our agenda, any topic at all, is welcome to do so. And at the moment, I do not have any green cards from someone who would like to do that. But if there's anyone in the audience who has something to talk about not on our agenda, this would be the right time. So I'm going to open and close the oral communication section of our meeting and move on to the next general area, which is our public hearing items, for which I gather many of you are here. The first public hearing item is the local coastal land use program, land use plan update. It's a study session, and this will be taken by, I'm going to guess Jill.
Good evening, Commission and community members. Thank you. We're happy to see you again to work on our land use plan. I do want to apologize that I caused the meeting to start a little bit late, and thank you for your patience. So again, as Vice Chair Benjamin noted, this is not a decision-making meeting. It is a study session, but we are working our way towards public hearings. So it's important to note that that transition will be coming. Also, before we start all of these, I need to share once again that we pay attention to potential conflicts of interest that individual Planning Commissioners may have. Under the Political Reform Act, the Commission can oversee general plan and LCP updates. However, when it comes to matters concerning specific parcels on maps, individual Commissioners may need to recuse themselves following public comments when this item comes back to them for discussion. We'll just make sure that they let us know if they need to step out for any particular topic, and then we will adjust the discussions order. So thank you for that. And jumping into our overview, this is what we're going to be presenting tonight in this order. So it's what you're used to. Want to check back in on where we last were here. It was July. That marked the completion of the full draft land use plan update. Tonight, you will receive a presentation from staff regarding the written comments received on this full draft. We will then take clarifying questions for Commissioners and public comment prior to commission discussion. Staff is looking for any input or direction from Commissioners on changes to make to bring about a final Planning Commission draft of this plan. And then we will conclude the meeting with a review of next steps and timing. However, before we launch into the presentation, we just want to make a few notes here. We need to take a moment to acknowledge the participation of the community as represented by the body of diverse and thought-provoking comments. This is a serious Planning Commission, and they do their homework, and they value your input, as does staff. The Commission has expressed in the past that they expect staff to consider all of the input. To that end, we want to reassure everyone that indeed, that is underway. Everything is catalogued, and we are working our way through it. Staff will present responses to all of the input at a future meeting. In many cases, however, tonight, we can answer questions on a lot of the input. In other cases, we have more work to do, and we'll just let you know if those kinds of topics come up. So keep that in mind as Brittany begins our presentation, where we will address many of the comments specifically, or at least as broad themes, while there are others that we can pick up at future sessions. And as you saw in a memo that we sent to you yesterday, we intend to have a second session following up with this one on October 8, so your very next meeting. All right, Brittany, thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Good evening, Commissioners. So as Jill mentioned, and as you saw in your packet, we saw a significant amount of public comment on this draft of the land use plan over the past year specifically, since the first public draft went out. Staff has been actively working on meeting and receiving comment letters from a wide variety of folks from the community, including residents, members of environmental groups, state and local agencies, and developer groups or representatives, and other landowners. We do want to note that it has been a long process, and if we happen to miss any of your comments, please let us know. We do plan on responding to each and every comment for the final revised draft and are working through that. So there's opportunity to let us know what we missed, and if you have anything to add. All right. I'm going to go through the chapters in reverse order to go through the comments received, the major topics. They get a little harder as we go back towards chapter two. And that's what most of the comments were received on and what we'd like to spend most of our time on. So I will start with scenic and visual. And just as a high-topic note, we have received specific line edit comments from the Coastal Commission on four of our chapters, including coastal access and recreation, coastal hazards, scenic and visual, and cultural resources, in addition to the comment letter that you saw go out in your memo yesterday. And that had some higher policy-level comments on the development and agriculture and natural resources chapter. So we'll hit on all those in order of the chapter, reverse order of the chapters, excuse me. So for scenic and visual, the main comment from the Coastal Commission was the need to clarify the way that we defined our visual resources, and then how we applied them on the maps. Specifically, the three categories that we defined were view sheds, view corridors, and highly scenic areas. And that comment came out from other public comments as well, and staff does see that there's definitely room for opportunity to clarify. Other comments included or addressed views across plan developments where there might be conflicts, calling a large undeveloped area that is in a plan development designation as a view shed where we're also allowing certain amounts of development. And so a pointed comment on that was that we could consider the need for more site-specific visual analysis before saying exactly what and how to protect. There was other comments on specific design considerations, including how to consider reducing energy use through design policies. And this is something we could do in this chapter. It could also be something that comes up in the development chapter or another residential design guideline document that the city has. Cultural resources was in pretty good shape. The only comment that we received was from the Coastal Commission, and it was pretty high level, just make sure that we're being consistent with their tribal consultation policy. And so we will be going back and doing that, but this chapter is close to where it needs to be, and we expect to bring it back at the end of October with a final revised draft. Coastal hazards is also in good shape. The Coastal Commission's overarching comment was about chapter organization and the need to clarify what hazards occur at and because of the shoreline interface, and what happens upland and might apply more widely across our jurisdiction. We have already done some work on that and haven't seen any issues or, you know, loss of policies or anything like that. Other comments from the public included the need for consistency with our best available sea level rise science, so making sure that the projections that we refer to in the chapter also include the Ocean Protection Council's most recent policy guidance document. Other comments included some concern around the application of redevelopment and existing structures. These are terms that are really specifically defined by the Coastal Commission's Sea Level Rise Guidance Document and have implications for what you're able to do when you are a structure on a receding shoreline. And there's also concerns with implications of the managed retreat policies and shoreline protection restrictions, and that also goes back to if you might be considered an existing structure. And that's a term and a concept that staff would like to discuss further with Coastal Commission staff. They do have very thorough policy guidance documents to refer to. We just struggle a bit with the term existing structures, and would like to understand how to clarify that that means pre-coastal existing structures, just has other more colloquial connotations. Moving on to natural resources. These were more general Coastal Commission comments. This was not one of the line-edited chapters that we received from them. Overall, it's a long chapter. They saw multiple opportunities for us to pull out some background detail and either put it into an appendix of the LEP or into another supporting document. Staff would recommend specifically that special status species tables could be moved into an appendix, and we'll also be going back through the chapter to look for other opportunities to truncate and streamline. Their other overarching policy was to simplify the buffer requirements. We have many different types of ESHA here in Hafoum Bay, and many policies on each individual type of ESHA. They did send us a couple examples from other jurisdictions that we could take a look at, where you establish a minimum buffer and have allowances for those buffers to be increased or decreased based on site-specific studies. So that was the Coastal Commission input. From the public, we requested, we received requests for a number of edits to the ESHA maps. Staff has been working closely with Huffman Broadway on a list of changes that need to be made to the ESHA maps. That's underway. We'll be coming back with that list of changes with the final map versions. To go with the need to clarify buffers, there was also requests for clarifications of where those buffers have changed, so where parcels have been grandfathered in with those changed buffer requirements. And staff is very sensitive to that request, and we'll make sure that that's clear in the final draft. We received a comment on including low-impact camping as a resource-dependent use, and that is a term resource-dependent use where it would be permitted in ESHA. And there were concerns from several property owners regarding their options if their property is entirely within ESHA or at ESHA buffers. Another comment that didn't come up specifically on the land use plan, but more with respect to another project, was the idea of having setbacks from ESHA buffers to allow the space for maintenance around a home or another structure that's built right up to an ESHA buffer. And we can consider how to incorporate this into the land use plan. Coastal Access and Rec from the Coastal Commission. And this was one of the closely-edited chapters from them, but they didn't have very many changes. Their main comment was on the provisions for lower-cost visitor-serving accommodations. Right now, we have a policy requiring 15% of a new higher-cost accommodation to provide, sorry, 15% of a lower-cost accommodation as well, and their standard is 25. So that was their specific comment. From residents, we heard general concerns about neighborhood quality, residential quality of lives, particularly with respect to short-term rentals and traffic. There was support for many of the concepts that are included in the town boulevard policies, roundabouts, and other traffic calming measures. There was also concerns that the allowed amount of development and build-out or new large hotel projects might really impact the already significant traffic issues. And we also got comments on the need for more coastal access parking at the south end of town and the need for more community recreation facilities. We wanted to note that the recently adopted Parks Master Plan does address community recreation facilities, and that could be addressed through more of a city parks and rec projects, perhaps separately from being a Coastal Act implementation policy. This is another chapter that's in really good shape, and we anticipate bringing it back soon. Agriculture, just general comments from Coastal Commission. They'd like to see closer reflection of the Coastal Act sections that protect agriculture and prime agricultural land. So we will be going back through the chapter and the policies specifically, and making sure that we are reflecting, implementing that language appropriately. Staff has had several meetings with interested parties, including the Farm Bureau, since this chapter went out last, or earlier this year, last year. I can't remember. It's been so long. So the take-home message, though, from those interested parties and landowners was that we need to support their operations with supplemental uses, as we've attempted to do in the draft, and to reduce or loosen oversight that is already applicable through other agencies like the county ag commissioner. And I think we've done a good job of that through the draft and the errata sheet. We received a couple questions about the application of the new agriculture land use designation, the minimum parcel size, as it might affect a parcel that does not meet that minimum parcel size. And these are things that we think we could work with those specific landowners on and come back with a good draft for you. This chapter is also really close to where it needs to be. Public Works. The Coastal Commission input has been general so far. This is the newest chapter, and staff has not had time to dive in with Coastal Commission on it yet. So their big overarching comment so far has been to So their big overarching comment so far has been to have more directive policies that help with actual development review and how to allocate our limited public services. Other comments, supported recycled or reclaimed water, we'll work on that terminology. We can also go back through the chapter and see if we need to strengthen the policies that support those types of facilities and programs. We need to make sure that we're coordinating with the Midcoast LCP, which we took very close care to do, doing the math for our, you know, through our build-out as we do have these overlapping service district boundaries. We do want to make sure, though, that the two documents read together, they harmonize, so we can, you know, use the same units of measurement, things like that. But we are definitely making sure to coordinate with that LCP. There were overarching concerns about infrastructure constraints and the need to potentially reduce the amount of allowed non-priority uses if there are, if we are going to run up against these infrastructure constraints that should be prioritizing priority development. We also received some clarifications from CCWD. Staff has been meeting with them early and often on this chapter and will continue to do so. And I think that's it. Back to Jill on the development chapter.
All right, so, development chapter. This is where quite a bit of the thickness of your attachment comes from. The majority of the public comments were here primarily with respect to plan developments. And so we're going to touch on tonight these specific areas with respect to plan developments, residential development in them, and as well as plan developments generally. So there was a number of concerns from property owners really about, what are you doing to my PD? And we've been trying to work with folks and explain the context for this and you can see the responses and we are going through them really carefully, noting that a number of them had concerns about the level of detail in the PD policies and a need for allowing flexible master planning. We've talked about this at a previous study session. This is not a new comment, but it expanded. We have more commenters on this and we'll get a little more information about this in a couple slides because we also heard about this from Coastal Commission staff. We heard concerns that there was downzoning, but we may be able to address this concern through adjusting the level of detail, so we'll need to be thinking about that. There are a couple PDs. In fact, we came out with three new ones in this draft plan. And two of them, we really thought they were ideas that were worth developing in the draft, but for various reasons, we intend to pull them back to residential designations. Those are the Dolores PD and the Upper Grand View Glencrey PD. And we've got a lot to cover tonight and if you want to dig into that, I can answer lots of questions about them. Noting, however, that we're still thinking about how to deal with Dolores in that there's really a lack of infrastructure and I think we still have quite a bit more to learn about it based on public comment that we have and quite a few field visits that we've been doing over the spring. With the Upper Grand View Glencrey, we actually really benefited from the community input to have a wetland delineation of Glencrey. And it is just one of those things where the wetlands are either in the right place, the wrong place, or whatever place they're in. In this case, whether it's right or wrong, they just make it really hard to work with it. So it's great that we have that data and so we want to pull back from that one, so we can talk to you about that later. There were comments on the plan development diagrams. Those are those really schematic, colorful diagrams that were included in this draft where you'll note that we had all kinds of little notes on them about being just illustrative and not intending to be a master plan for those areas. We've talked about these before and it's funny because they were never meant to be a part of the plan. They originated as planning tools for staff. This is the kind of stuff your staff does to make sure things fit. And we measure and we check densities, we look for buffer space and access and can the park be put in a good place? And we just don't want to come out with policies that can't be implemented. That said, there's many more ways to plan some of these PDs and what's represented in these schematics. So the ad hoc committee, you know, we were working with them on them and we decided, I think, that it would be helpful at this level of draft to include them because they really, actually help people visualize the policies. But you're going to see those go away and that's why. We also noted, we've had a lot of questions about Carter Hill and the challenges there. You know it's in a very high-fire severity zone and it's steep and most of the plan development area is above the 160-foot contour. And it also has a little bit of public facilities in it because there's a water tank site. So we're considering how to have additional uses there that may be more appropriate. You know that the existing land use plan has quite a bit of residential considered for that area, which is really a concern. So with people coming to the counter and talking to us about it, we've been talking about some different kinds of agriculture, even viticulture for that particular area. We're also recommending adding a couple uses to the Stone Pine Public Works Conservation Corridor PD. And we want to be really clear, the conservation corridor stays the same. We don't know how big it needs to be because this needs to be really studied in depth by field work with biologists and other folks. But the rest of it, we had, you know, the city's corp yard is there and it's been considered to be compatible. It's a low trip generator, it's got a pretty small footprint. But there are some other uses that are similar to that that could be compatible with the next-door use, including, which is Spanish Town, such as some very light industrial uses or certain kinds of agriculture. So we felt that we had overly restricted the range of uses for that PD, which is proposed. This is a new PD for this plan. But that doesn't, again, the conservation corridor has to stay. This isn't about replacing that. So we want to talk about housing affordability and diversity. This was a really important statement from the G-PAC, the General Plan Advisory Committee. They were really looking for the plan to have some innovation and be very smart about how housing could support the local community. So I'll try to cover in the next few slides. And at a future study session, I'm hoping to have the city's housing consultant come to one of your sessions so he can help us out a bit. He has been listening to the discourse that's been going on with the Planning Commission and he and I meet and I've kept him abreast of frankly what he finds to be innovative housing strategies that you've incorporated into this draft plan. We were asked, let me, yeah, we were asked about the definitions that are included in here, noting that extremely low, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate income housing. Where are they defined? What do they mean? And in fact, they are in the glossary, all of these different categories of housing. These are right out of state housing law, they're consistent with our housing element. They have to be. This is really important that we're absolutely consistent. Now, that isn't as helpful to folks in terms of visualizing what that means in terms of how much it costs and who might be living in these units and why. So we'll try to cover a little bit of that tonight and also to be really clear about how all of the categories can be accommodated in the plan or thought about in laying out this plan and incentivized and planned for in ways that are meant to support the local workforce without expanding the developed footprint of the city. So next, we heard some, we got a little feedback about the affordability component. That was, it was one of the general policies for the PDs. As you know, the PDs were set up with a series of policies that apply to all of them. Vice Chair Benjamin named those the factored policies because that's really how they worked. And one of those was about different things that make housing more affordable or ways to provide affordable housing should a PD develop with residential development. So we've heard about the 20% below-market rate requirement and I just want to remind everybody, we didn't invent this. This is in your zoning code now. That is the city's below-market rate requirement for projects with 10 or more units that are for ownership housing. You had a recent study session on this in July where we talked about potentially applying this also to rental housing. We weren't able to do that before because there was a case law that prevented that, but that has been overturned. So this is something that we think is fully consistent with your current LCP. In fact, I think it's, we'd be really uncomfortable with another consideration around residential development in PDs. There were a number of other things such as, there's a policy about, it makes a reference to generally having single-family homes be limited in size. It says general and yet this has really caused a lot of stress around that. Of course, if you think about it, 2,000-square-foot home with a 450-square-foot garage and what if it also had an 800-square-foot ADU? We're getting quite a bit of development for something like that. So we need to really think about just how restrictive that would be if it were held to a really tight standard versus being general, which was our intent. So you have some discretion about, maybe there's a range of sizes of homes and types of homes in a plan development, attached product or townhomes, garden apartments, et cetera, mixed with single-family homes. I know how to fix that. Okay, then, quickly then. So that tells me I was hanging on that slide too long, so it's good feedback. So while we get that back up, a couple notes about accessory dwelling units. There were all kinds of comments about ADUs. From the perspective of ADUs in PDs, there was a wide range of feedback, including someone who really felt that if there was a big house to be approved, it should be required to include an ADU, as well as concern about what does it mean to have ADUs in PDs if the HOA, the homeowners association, does not allow them. We do note that recent state legislation probably is going to take that away. I think that is no longer allowed. So this is a really dynamic area where we're going to continue to work with the Planning Commission really on zoning to try to keep our code up with state laws and requirements. When they get this back, there's going to be a really nice, helpful table that will help us talk about the priority housing overlay. The priority housing overlay is something that's gotten quite a bit of energy and input, mostly positive, and we want to work hard to make this work because I've been talking to lots of housing folks and I'm looking at best practices locally and in other parts of the state. And this is a great way to pair housing with where the workforce works. And we know that folks are wondering about the levels of affordability that it provides for and also there are land uses that are pretty sensitive where the housing overlay is proposed, such as parklands, regional parklands, particularly state parks who already has, they have six units over in the Miramar area and, you know, they lost one, so they used to have seven. And they're pleased that we're trying to plan for them and to consider appropriate locations where they could house their coastal, their midcoast staff, their rangers. County parks saw that, believe it or not, I don't know if everybody knows this, there's actually a home on Sematell County Parkland property over by Poplar Beach near the parking lot off of Railroad Avenue. They very much would like to have a few more units there, small units, low-rise. So we put in five in this draft plan. State parks, we had 10, so that they had a little bit of wiggle room over the seven that they really need right now. And we're going to have to figure out in this priority overlay if this is going to have to be mapped in advance or really pinned down through very specific policy language. Your staff is concerned about mapping it because then it's hard to make adjustments if we need to. We're also concerned about not mapping it because we don't want to have unintended consequences. And I think that aligns with work that we did with the ad hoc committee. So we just want to put that out there. I'm confident that we can do a good job either way, but that's where it's at. That overlay also, in the case of parks, would need to house parks employees. In the case of agriculture or horticulture, the intent is, thank you, that it would house folks who are in that industry, hopefully working on or near the property, but possibly there could be a little more open-mindedness about that. But we would really expect a land that has prime soils, that has a zoning designation for agriculture, if it was going to have housing on it, that the housing be for ag workers as well as potentially researchers and students who come through and need to do some boarding and research. There's a lot of interest in Hafn Bay's, some of our ag industries by UC Davis, for example, and that's a really great kind of accessory, ancillary, or even niche use for smaller ag lands in town if you have an interest in giving them some financial support that other than converting to another land use. So I'm trying to figure out how to add the research thread into this overlay for ag along with farm labors. This table shows the overlay intended, who would live in these different combinations of the overlay. I've already talked about the first two. The green highlight, what we're trying to show with these colors is our anticipated, kind of our expectations of what the affordability levels would need to be. And in this case, the green means very low or low. maybe even extremely low. In some cases, we would expect most of the ag worker housing to be in those categories. And those are categories that can actually get funding. Now, for the regional public rec, you know, we've got county employees. We're probably at a little bit higher level, maybe between low and maybe moderate. We have more learning to do there. You'll notice the "no" in the right column under "density bonus." We think it's really important, under these categories, to be clear that there needs to be a cap on how many units. And this is not about having a density bonus. So if we have to allow density bonus, then we're going to have to kind of calculate it in. It's kind of like when you go to a sale and they say there's no sales tax. It's one of those things. So anyway, think about it a little bit that way. Now, public facilities was the other base designation where the overlay is proposed to be combined. Start with schools and city-owned because those are kind of the easiest. We've talked about successful teacher and staff housing projects that are located on school sites in Samatéo County and quite a few other places. In particular, the Samatéo Community College District has two really, really successful projects with that. And the idea there, of course, is that you work there, you live there. Perhaps they don't have enough market to develop several units just from their own staff. So maybe there's a possibility that some kind of other public employees or other kinds of service workers would be considered for that housing. Same thing maybe with city-owned. But we don't have a lot of property suitable for housing, so don't assume that's going to be a high yield. The churches, we would expect, and we've seen this done, there are some nonprofits associated with different churches that develop housing. And they're, depending on how it's funding, they will, the funded projects, they will most likely be at the very lower, those lower income levels. And that's the intent. So the combination here is kind of the gray ones are really some of that missing middle that you noted in some of the comments. But that said, there's a lot more missing middle housing in this plan through those PD affordability requirements and the mixed-use downtown incentives. Noting that rents in Half Moon Bay are often pretty close, they're between the low and moderate income level for the county because the county's median income is so high that that actually works out pretty well. So supporting rental housing in the town center is, there's a lot of that in your plan, and that's one of the reasons why. Okay. And it's you.
Okay, good. Okay. Sorry, our internet cut out there. Okay, so yesterday you received a memo from staff that included a comment letter from Coastal Commission staff and responses from your city staff. And that is available online on the agenda if anyone has not had a chance to see it yet. Just to preface, the staff has been doing early and often coordination with Coastal Commission staff to identify things like you're seeing in the letter and hoping to get ahead of these issues before we bring this to them for certification. So some of the things in the letter have been part of our conversations. There are a couple new concepts, and that's why you're seeing those staff responses with some initial thoughts on recommendations or options and the need to come back for another study session with some more thinking through of these concepts. That said, we're having ongoing and positive and productive conversations with Coastal Commission staff so that we can make sure we understand what their recommendations are intending and so that they understand where we're coming from, where we see challenges or there's site-specific things or background or history that they might not be aware of. So just to summarize, there are three comments in this letter. One was about streamlining the document and replacing the placeholder land use designations. And that includes the Plan Development, Urban Reserve, and Open Space Reserve, and reducing the level of specificity in the PD policies. So we'll go through each of those three comments in a little more detail here. The document length, there's a lot of background information in this plan. We wanted to provide the narrative to support the policies. We also wanted to have a document that can also serve as a land use element. So we do recognize that a lot of information in here goes beyond the scope of Coastal Act requirements. And I think their take-home message is that the job of a local coastal program is to implement the Coastal Act. And we're doing more here. So there's options for that. We can have a separate land use element or other optional general plan elements that removes those programmatic policies and more background information that is not relevant to the Coastal Act. And that could make a very good land use element that would support and be complementary to this land use plan. So that could also lend to streamlining the certification of this document as well as reduce the need for future LCP amendments. If there's something that needs to be changed in this plan that isn't necessarily under the purview of the Coastal Commission, they would still need to certify that amendment. So there's options, ways to do this. We would like to bring you another, an example of what that might look like, some specific pieces that we think could be pulled out and bring that to you on October 8. And that's what I just went over. And back to Jill again.
All right. And you know, we noted this. This was a deliberate choice, Brittany was just discussing in terms of having everything in there. We noted a few steps along the way that, you know, that might not be the way to go. But we liked it because we were doing comprehensive planning. The good thing, if we do separate it, just a note, is because it was put all together, if we were to take sections out of it and they were prepared, actually, they were sectioned out in a way anticipating that this might happen, we will have compatible policies, which is really important. Moving on, because I guess I get to just keep talking about PDs. They, the direction on this from Coastal Commission staff in the memo, it ranged a bit, but some of the feedback was that we should really be master-planning the PDs at this time with the LCP update. It was the opportunity to do that. And we had to have some clarifying conversations with them about that. We've already had one. And we think it's simpler. They think about master-planning, or at least the way they used it, that term, in this letter. They're really suggesting it was, instead of keeping them as PDs, if you know what the right end land use should be, put it in that land use designation as opposed to leaving it open for having to figure out what it's going to be. So that, for us, master-planning is a really detailed sort of effort. And what you got in your draft plan with those little diagrams, that's kind of like a 20,000-foot-up master plan, but a master plan gets right into it. So it helped understand what they wanted. And therefore, we think we can be somewhat responsive to that one. In particular, the PD designations with respect to substantially developed PDs really don't need to be clung to forever going forward. And we can talk about that. With substantially undeveloped ones, you saw in our memo, we have some pretty strong recommendations about maintaining the PD designation. And there's a lot of reasons why. So we, for example, with developed PDs, we could imagine them being re-designated on the land use map consistent with a land use that is developed or approved to be developed. Let's take a pretty easy one. A Pacific Ridge is at a density. It's residential. It's completely residential. And it's at a low density within the range of the land use plan designation. It could be put into that land use plan designation. Matucci is an interesting one. We actually don't have a land use designation that matches its density or an eventual zoning district to put it in. So we would talk about maybe some kind of a rural residential classification for it that could maybe be useful in other cases, like the western portion, for example, of Dolores. And we can talk about that more. Ocean Colony has come up. People have already been talking to me about it today. They saw the memo and they always, they are very concerned that, oh, gosh, we are a Plan Development, developed over time through a series of subdivisions, some of which had specific plans, many that did not. And what does this mean? Well, I think we should talk about it just a little bit because I think it will reassure folks in Ocean Colony if we were to change the land use designation at this level in this document to match the density, basically, the residential density. And we'll think about Ocean Colony, the residential portion. Of course, they've got frontage on Highway 1, and we need to really think about that as well. But if it was matching the designation in your land use plan, that doesn't mean we're going to then have to put it in an R1 zoning district. There's a many-to-one relationship between the land use plan designation can be consistent with many different zoning designations. Ocean Colony is in a PUD zone. It's possible that it could just stay in the PUD zone and be consistent. It would just simplify our land use plan. It's also possible that a zoning designation could be prepared for different PDs. We heard from Coastal Commission staff today about a built-out area in another part of the state where they just did this recently. So for example, R-Ocean Colony, and it refers right out to their CCNRs or it incorporates them. And all we're doing is just documenting it in the MUNI code or in some other way. So I just want to kind of reassure people if the Coastal Commission staff really wants this done, we think there's ways to do this with the developed areas that are really still very protective of them. And we can work with that. Now, there's undeveloped PDs. I've already talked about Carter Hill. We thought about it also for maybe this rural residential idea which could incorporate some agriculture. The South Downtown Gateway, you saw in your memo. You know, I would have put it in a commercial category on a map and tried to get your feedback on that had we not had an active development application. That said, the application is consistent with the PD. And there are two general plan designations that are also consistent with the PD. And there's lots of zoning that is too. So it's one parcel. It's strange that it's a Plan Development, in a way. So that's, you know, if they really want us to try to just hone it down to the ones that really need that kind of master planning that we talked about, we think we would end up with those on the west side of Highway 1, specifically North Wave Crest, West of Railroad, Venice, and Surf Dunes, as well as two that are in the town center, Podesta and Stone Pine Public Works. Nursery Men's Exchange is kind of on the fence. It could go either way. It doesn't have a lot of parcels. It doesn't have a lot of landowners. But it does have a lot of interesting things going on around it, including a water course, a fire hazard, access challenges, and et cetera. So we'll talk to the landowner about it as well. But if you have input on that, we'll, of course, want to hear that. All right. So then, level of detail in Plan Developments. So if we're not going to master-plan them or re-designate them, the Coastal Commission staff would like the level of detail, specifically with respect to the quantification, how much? Because that would preclude their ability to review future specific plans in a manner that they would really like to keep that open. So that aligns with input that you've had from property owners who have these PDs. You know, one of the reasons why we did what we did with planning them out at kind of this high level was we needed to understand what those lands could support more realistically than what's in the 1996 certified document, which didn't always take into account some of the things that were known then, but more things that we've learned since then. We also needed to know how much would go in them for the sake of infrastructure planning. And that went into the maximum theoretical build-out. So we understand a higher-level discussion and vision for the PDs. But we're getting the sense from more conversation with the staff there that they still would fully support the draft policies that are included that are real clear about how to address things like hazards, prime soils, ESHA, visual resources, et cetera. And that these really are the components that go into that master planning and that whole policy about master planning. They're not picking on that at all. There's comfort with that. So we need to have more conversations with them and update you more at your next meeting. If you have specific questions about that, though, we can convey that along with our discussion. Next slide. I think I've already noted all of that. Look at that. All right. This one was, this was a new comment. We had not known that this was something that the Coastal Commission staff was interested in, which is the Urban Reserve and Open Space Reserve designations. Brittany already noted the comment about placeholder designations. Reserve designations fill that role. PD designations, in a way, do. But reserve designations, they're always a challenge. And we're hearing from them that we really should have considered perhaps their actual envisioned land use, such in such cases where it's agriculture. And if not, they've suggested re-designating these to PDs, which we are trying to really understand because we also had the feedback about kind of whittling down the PDs. And they know. They understand that they've given us a lot to chew on here. They're very mindful of that. So we've got a lot of thoughts on this, and we're going to keep thinking about it. But because we've spoken with landowners and we really don't want to impose a land use change to the agriculture designation. The ag designation was created as an option to encourage owners who had, in particular, conservation easements put on their ag lands and that lands, and that it might be really an advantage to them in some ways, possibly even for taxes, to go into that category. Having it be voluntary is a preference that we thought that was appropriate for folks. They're longtime landowners, they're really important to the community, they're providing so many of the Half Moon Bay, just cultural and historic, and all that perspective of what people really like about the town, with these lower-density land uses that help us with struggling with some of this buildout. So, trying to do that in that way was your staff's intent. We also were, at the same time, with the ADHOC committee, figuring out how to support them through supplemental uses, including some of the ones I talked about earlier around housing. We're concerned about re-designating them to PDs, because there's tiering of development, and for the PDs outside of the town center, City Council has, you know, they've prioritized town center and infill development, and having more PDs outside of the town center is just something that we didn't anticipate, and we really wouldn't be able to time the tiering and the staging of them after PD's possibly development, develop in time. We do note, because the new open space for conservation designation, that's a new designation introduced in this plan, is picking up some of the open space reserve areas. It may be possible to take both urban reserve and open space reserve, and because most of the lands in those categories that would be left, as shown on the draft map now, they're pretty similar, and maybe there's one category, so we don't have so many holding patterns. We talked about a rural reserve, but we really strongly recommend maintaining a reserve type of category. And we'll come back on October eighth with that. So, we're wrapping up, I know that was long, we did not anticipate we were going to have so much new information, past the staff report you got on Tuesday, so we worked that in pretty quickly. We would like to come back with more detail and recommendations, as you've heard both of us talk about at your next session. This list here is sort of our starting point, but if anything else occurs to you, of course, we'd like to hear about that. Our typical format, we're eager to hear clarifying questions, although we did make the public wait a really long time, so hopefully they can get their chance as well, and give you plenty of time for discussion tonight. We, Brittany, can you show the next slide? We want to make sure that if anybody leaves early, that they know that we're going to be obviously talking about this in two weeks, but on October 29th, we have scheduled a joint study session of the Planning Commission with City Council at the TED ADHOC Community Center, and so we will be continuing from where we leave off on October 8th, so we wanted to just make sure everybody in the room knows that. And with that, we'll turn it back over to our chair for the night.
Thank you, Jill and Brittany. I did notice a lot of shifting in the seats, so if we have a lot of clarifying questions, if we don't, I'd like to try to get to the public, but by all means, are there any clarifying questions we should hear before we hear the public? Cow view. Okay, so I'm going to open the public hearing. I have three green sheets from people who have said they want to speak on this item. If you have not filled out one of these green sheets, but you'd like to speak, you can do it while they're speaking, or you can just go to the podium when the time is right, and if you don't mind filling one out afterwards, we'd be grateful. So, the first green sheet that I received is from Maurice Rosenberg. Welcome, Mr. Rosenberg. You may need to push the button so that there's a green light at the base of the stem of the microphone. And then you should move within a fist of the microphone, and that way the folks at home can hear you.
The clock up there, my vision isn't all that great, but the clock up there is a little intimidating, I hope that isn't in the thousands of seconds or minutes.
Three minutes.
I didn't want to do a filibuster. Am I good here? Commissioners, staff, thank you for affording the community the opportunity to contribute to this process. I'm Mo Rosenberg, and I do real estate advisory services, and I have a client who actually owns a piece of property, and I believe you all have a nice photo showing that property, which is just north of Sam's. And a little background, year and a half ago, we were in a contract of sorts with the Harbor District, for them to locate their headquarters in that location, and as well as part of that development, there was, as you'll see on the second page of this handout, coastal access, handicapped access, community room, and it was an understanding at that stage of development that some additional parking would be afforded and made available to Sam's Chowder House, where it is desperately, desperately needed. Certainly on the weekends, when the board is inactive, those parking stalls could be made available. There was also discussion that, in addition to what is shown on this very preliminary concept, there, it was, you know, the smaller the building, the more parking that could be made available. But even at this scale, additional parking could be engineered. And in that regard, I wanted to, just for a moment, address the safety issue that really is paramount in this location. It's virtually two years this weekend that death occurred along the highway. And as you can see from the photograph that I've provided you, the traffic could be quite considerable. People parking where they shouldn't be parking, people parking where it's unsafe, people parking for public access on private property. And it's been a strong interest that a community effort be made available, and to, and that was what was so good about the Harbor District interest, but they've chosen another location. So we're looking as to, how could we continue with a project that can provide the access as well as deal with the safety concerns, and provide additional parking, and we'd like to engage in that conversation.
Thank you. The next green sheet I have is from Mike Ferreira. Welcome, Mike.
Good evening, Chair Benjamin, Commissioners and staff. I was reminiscing earlier tonight about attending a meeting in City Hall, in which the citizens packed the room, the standing room, all around, and this was in reaction to the diet Badiya plan for North Wavecrest. And this was an old guard council, as we define people here. And finally, the mayor, Mayor Frazier, said, "Leave the PDs alone, leave them alone," because that's where we were getting into trouble, was we were messing with the PDs, and it had the town outraged. There's wisdom in that. There was also some wisdom when the council fairly recently said, "Leave Pacific Ridge and Ocean Colony alone," relative to the ADU ordinance, and that was kind of emphatic. So, here we are, back again, with the same stuff. Now, look, I had something to do with Pacific Ridge. You had lawsuits, appeals, we were all, went up to the appeals court three times, we made new law. We have a settlement agreement involving the Coastal Commission, the city, and the landowner. We have a special, most of the area is under a conservation easement. All of this is a rap. Plus, we had all the people on terrace feeling like they were double-crossed in the first place, even though we negotiated from 197 down to 63. Putting it in an R1 means we get to play the ADU game, and we get to put a little more salt in the wounds of the people on terrace, you know. At some level, the voters count. And I would just suggest that we not get involved in that. I would like, while I'm here, to say that all the comments of the Committee for Green Foothills, I'd like to adopt that on behalf of the Sierra Club, with one exception, and that's that I really believe that we need to define our water capacity in terms of five-eighths permits, unconnected, all of which are in the hands of people. We went through that here. But when we start getting into mega gallons, all of a sudden, it looks like there's enough, even though when we looked at permits, there clearly is not. We can talk mega gallons, but we have to at least put some reality check in there about what permits are actually available for development. Amazing how little one can say in three minutes, but thank you for providing that. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very succinct, and you got a lot in. The last green sheet I have is from George Mutov. Welcome back, George.
Thank you, and hello to all you Commissioners, it's been a bit of a time. Wanted to take a quick second to recognize the staff's effort through this entire process has just been phenomenal. I remember well the 2004, 2005 end of it, and we were, along with other things, discussing that earlier this evening as well, the one o'clock and the two o'clock in the morning fights and screaming, and it's just been great, staff has been absolutely incredible.
Excuse me, George, if you could just move a little closer to the microphone.
I said, "Staff has been absolutely incredible."
Thank you.
And it is certainly appreciated by many. I wanted to just ask a question, and I don't have the answer to it, but maybe you do, or maybe it's worth talking about. Regarding affordable housing, it seems to me that right now is an outstanding opportunity for folks who intend to construct affordable housing to do so. It seems to me that the city has provided a stream of benefits and incentives to encourage that, and I would support that. But I'm also curious, with property values being so high in Half Moon Bay, what other incentives, or are there other incentives that could be provided? For example, CCWD, I know they have priority hookups, but you can't get those, so if you're going to the open market, you're looking at 70 grand per hookup, you know, if you're building 100 units, or 50 units, or 200, whatever it is, those numbers add up significantly, along with sewer permits. And I'm hopeful that maybe you guys might be able to come up with something that might address those two points, water and sewer, as incentivizing for affordable housing here in Half Moon Bay. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, George. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Thank you.
Good evening, Carrie Burke, and I also really share my gratitude to Jill and her leadership in getting this document together. It has been a long haul, and just incredible with the staff, and just being very inclusive, and listening to all the various people. Also, the Planning Commission, I know how much time and effort you put in, and the public, we've had just some phenomenal comments, and so this is an overall planning process, I just, I think we are getting it right this time, it's taking, it'll take a little bit more effort to get some more polish on it and answer some questions, so I think that's part of what we're doing right now. I would appreciate getting a copy of the Coastal Commission's letter, their memo, I believe that it would be really interesting to study and see where they're coming from on some of their comments. But I do share their concern about the PD, and that for this level of effort, we should have some answers. It's been 35 years since these properties have been designated as PDs, the landowners and the community do, they deserve some definite information about what these places are going to look like. And I think a lot of the information when we develop the infrastructure, all the details about that, it'll really tell us about how much development we're really going to have in, on the coast side. I don't, personally, I think that it will be less than people imagine, I think they're fearful, but the reality is, we just, we only have a finite amount of resources, and what's really capable of our care and capacity here. But I just think that having that information and adding that to the general plan, and having it all wound up and synthesized will be very helpful. So, we'll just keep on working on this, and I look forward to seeing the final document. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, welcome, Greg.
Good evening, Planning Commission and staff. One of the comments I wanted to make is, there are some lots in town that have an R2 zoning, and my question is, if we had several lots of those that are adjacent to each other, if we would be allowed to build a project that would be clustered, as opposed to two units per lot, or also with ADUs? As far as doing affordable housing, it'd be a lot more cost-efficient if you had one structure with several units, then it has to be broken down, you know, two per lot. So it's a thought, otherwise, it makes it very difficult to bring the cost down for the construction. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else going? Okay, we'll close, I assume you want to close the public hearing for discussion, we can always open it for a later study session. So, we're closed for now. Thank you for the comments, I appreciate your succinctness, and we'll bring it back to the Commission, unless staff has any responses. Nope. So, colleagues, who wants to weigh in first?
Oh, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Hernandez.
So, I appreciate, having read through the 82 pages of background, I appreciate the writer who breeds more words than he needs is making a chore for the reader who reads, I get that, but we have an obligation to make sure people get context around the document. I do think a lot of the pretext in the document we've put together does provide a context for readers. I do think the 82 pages in the natural resources chapter is a bit of a stretch, so we could probably move that someplace else, but I do think it's important to maintain context, because not all of us go to Stanford, or Berkeley, or Columbia for planning, and so it's good for the layperson to have context when they're looking at these documents. Really appreciate the very diverse set of comments we've received here. The only other thing I have is just a piece of feedback, is I think most of the Commission, Planning, the Coastal Commission's comments are well-founded, I think I'd take exception around the change to the urban reserve, there's a lot of thought that goes into that, and I look forward to having a dialogue with the Coastal Commission around their intention. I think that we've done a lot of work here to protect the, protect the city, and urban reserve is one of the areas that really helps us prioritize areas of development and deprioritize areas of development in a thoughtful way. Like the idea of... Like the idea of moving the areas that are substantially developed out of PUDs. I think that makes a lot of sense. I want to be careful not to conflate Pacific Ridge, which is significantly developed, with the comment that was made about, "Don't mess with the PUDs." I mean, the area is already substantially developed. I don't think there's really anything left to be done there, other than to make sure that the obligations are followed through, that have been litigated many, many times as Mr. Farrar has indicated. I think that's all I have for now, and I'll preserve comments for my colleagues.
Okay, take a breather. Sarah? Steve? Steve?
Thank you to everybody who is here tonight to participate in this and all the folks who commented, and especially to team at staff who has been dealing with all of this content, especially rapid changes coming in the last few days. A very vivid idea of what kind of a job that must be, so I appreciate all your hard work. Just a few comments, some of them very tactical and some of them probably to be part of the further discussion of the Coastal Commission staff input. In the Coastal Commission letter, I think I understand what they're getting at when they talk about background info and programmatic—well, I won't quote from it—but programmatic policies they recommend are—for several reasons—would live better outside of this plan. I think we—I think I'll understand that better when you folks come back in two weeks with some examples of those things. But obviously, we want to be sure that we're not removing policies or other statements of direction that really do cry out for the Coastal Commission certification and the protection that comes from that. But I'm sure Coastal Commission staff will give us good guidance on that. The Committee for Green Foothills comments, which I think was from Lenny specifically, mentioned the sea level rise, being up-to-date on sea level rise, which you had in your presentation. And I applaud us for looking at that. I know that we talked about that not very long ago, I think in the Public Works chapter, when we were talking about the sewer plant. Excuse me. At the time, staff seemed pretty confident that we were working off the best available projections, but it's probably worth double-checking that. And we also will need a process going forward where we keep up to date on those projections as well. Mr. Salumi, who's here tonight, had a couple of good comments that I wanted to reinforce. One about the emphasis on native trees within our heritage tree policies. I think there is some now, but it would be—it would be a healthy thing to look at that again and make sure we're doing as much as we ought to be for the native trees in the city. And some months ago, Roy had a—at the time, I marked as a very interesting idea that, given the way our climate is trending, do we want to think either in this plan or in our zoning about ways to quickly shift some land to ag land if need be? If the day comes when all of a sudden, we got to grow more of our own food? I honestly don't know whether that's something that the LCP should address, or maybe there are things to think about in zoning that would make that an easy switch. And former Mayor Farrar made an interesting couple of points just now. I think at the time, we were talking about Public Works. He may also have raised the question about scrutinizing the budget of water permits from CCWD as opposed to the less granular data that we maybe are working with. I'd be interested in seeing that. I think that'd be an interesting way of looking at what the city can expect versus CCWD's other customers as we go forward in the planning—towards the planning horizon. And also, the question that Mike raised about ADUs. My feeling is that taking something like Pacific Crest or Ocean Colony out of PD into R1 wouldn't necessarily open up unrestrained ADU permission, but I don't know that for certain. I guess I have the vague feeling that that is controllable at the zoning level, but I just would love to hear more discussion about it from people who know more about it. That's all I have for now. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Sarah?
So I'd also like to echo my fellow commissioners' thanks to staff and to the public for all of this wonderful work. I really—it was really wonderful to read through all of the comments. And I appreciated also knowing that the letter from the Coastal Commission came kind of late in the game. I really appreciated the responses to better understand some of the comments. And I did—I also felt that there were some of them that were a little unexpected. I still need to noodle on them in my brain. So my immediate kind of response is based on what the Coastal Commission's letter is that—I too am hesitant. I don't really know that I would want to see the urban reserve—the reserve designations go away. I'm not exactly sure how that would ripple out. And so—and I think that it's a little hard at this point in the game. I know some of the feedback I gather—well, you reported—the staff reported out on some of that feedback. I was aware of it. But that was new, and I still am not comfortable with that at this point. I also—I share the question that I think you raised in response to the specificity of the PDs. If they aren't specific, I'm not exactly sure—I wouldn't necessarily want to see us move forward with the existing information about build-out in PDs when it so clearly doesn't reflect the landscape. So part of what—the benefit of putting—taking into account things like tsunami hazard zone or map ESHA is that you do have a better understanding of what your potential build-out is in these areas. If that specificity is not included, then I don't know that it's a good idea just to rely on the existing numbers from the existing LUP—or LCP. So yeah, I'm not sure exactly how that will play out. And I'm not sure that it's appropriate at this point to go through a master planning process. I don't see how that's appropriate at this point with the local coastal program update. So anyways, I'd be interested to see what the response is from the commission on that one—Coastal Commission, sorry. And there are a couple other things that I wanted to—oh, I did want to say that I've realized that the PD diagrams that you put out there—I, you know, I realize that they may have caused angst. They were very helpful. So I just want to put it out there that—I did appreciate that because it helped for understanding how these policies might apply. So I just wanted to put that out there and also support that they shouldn't be in the final plan by any means. So a couple other things. I was also interested in the comments about the single-family home size limits. And I was—I'm still supportive of limiting that to the smaller size or the less than 2,000 square feet, especially in light of what you pointed out, that that doesn't necessarily mean that the structure will end up being 2,000 square feet, that there's more—that could end up being much larger. So I just wanted to put that out there, that I think that that's an appropriate guidance and direction to take for the plan. And then I had—I did actually have—oh, sorry. And one other point that I wanted to just kind of echo Commissioner Ruddock's points about the—in the native trees supporting. And it's more so perhaps that it's being careful about recognizing where there's invasive tree species that can be very harmful for our community because of fire hazard and they're—you know, and they're also—they use a lot of water. I'm speaking specifically—I think of eucalyptus. And I liked—I think Roy Salumi suggested, you know, over time, replacing the eucalyptus as you can. I think that's very appropriate. I would also point out that a lot of these—it might be worthwhile—I know this is about heritage trees and maintaining heritage trees, but when we think about our urban forests, thinking about not letting those trees get to the point where they are a management nightmare, basically. So allowing or making encouraging policies that manage the spread of those less desirable invasive tree species and others. So I think that's worthwhile. That's money and time well-spent now rather than waiting till they become heritage tree size. And then there was one other kind of question I had. There was a—I think it was also Mr. Salumi also proposed—or suggested adding camping as a resource-dependent use. So thus, it would then be allowed in ESHA. And I would be interested to hear the Coastal Commission's thoughts on that and whether that's happened in other places. And so kind of learn more about that because I hadn't been aware of that. And for now, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to take another run at the microphone?
Sure.
Okay.
Very supportive of the housing overlay. There's some feedback around that, especially around—that's in the comment letters. Very supportive of many of the comments, in particular, very supportive of what we can do to help the school district and state parks. The project in question—not to get overly prescriptive and down in the weeds, but the state parks project near Poplar Beach is probably a good place to put additional housing for state parks workers—county parks, sorry. But if there's anything we can do to speed along the process for giving the school district flexibility to provide housing for teachers, I think that's, you know, something to think about. It's not only my supportive, but I'd love to see us accelerate our policies because we do have a crisis providing housing for teachers who are qualified. Just going back to the Coastal Commission's guidance to reduce the level of specificity in the PDs, to echo Commissioner Ruddock's comments, just want to make sure that we don't—we don't lose the intent of the policies, right? We need setback. We need erosion. We need protection of ESHAs. We need visual corridors to be protected. I mean, these are big, broad, general policies that need to be applied for all development within Half Moon Bay, not just for the PDs. And so if we can take a step back and just make sure that we reduce redundancy and, you know, just apply these broadly, then we're not being overly prescriptive for some of these projects, but we're setting a guideline that applies to everybody equally. I think that's a good approach to take.
Anybody else want another run of the mic before I jump in?
Well, I had just one other thing. Thank you, Chair Benjamin. I wanted—I wanted to echo another thing in the Committee for Green Foothills comments, which you folks already know about because you had it in your presentation, but the question of recycled and reclaimed water and what the city—I know the city can't solve that problem all by ourselves, but what can we do to make that more real? I know Bruce Russell from Kenmark was telling me earlier this year, he'd been wanting to use recycled or reclaimed water for many, many years if it could just be made available. So I think—I think that's important for the city to figure out what our—what our role in that—towards that solution could be.
Okay. Any more, Sarah? Okay. So I'll unload for a page. So first, thank you for your comments. I agree with pretty much everything that was said. I do have a few additional thoughts that didn't come up yet, so I'll just focus on those rather than reiterating them. The first thing was that on my way back with Luna to the car before coming to the meeting, I ran her to a neighbor who was a member of the Parks and Rec Commission in the 1960s, who happens to live not far from me. And she told me that she was thinking about making a donation to the city to have some benches in the area between Casa Del Mar and the state beach, say around Kelly. And the reason that she felt that way was that seniors who might have disabilities, might have a hard time getting around, really value those benches. It's an opportunity for them to sit down and get some rest. And that—I don't believe is feedback that's come up so far in the coastal access conversation. And I want—I felt, you know, this is just an illustration that it is never too late for a new, good idea to show up. And I appreciated it. And, you know, I don't think she—although I think she was thinking about that area, it probably generalizes that we could look at our coastal trail, and for that matter, other trails, and ask ourselves where we can put in that. It also strikes me as a powerful tool for communicating to the users of our trails where we think the trail should be, and perhaps more importantly, where we do not. She didn't suggest planting poison oak in the areas that they aren't, but that also struck me as a valuable way of thinking about this. So I wanted to get that on the record and thank her for everybody who's watching and encourage those other great ideas. With respect to the Coastal Commission letter that came in, you know, we've been working at this for several years. Rick and I have been doing this for more than two years with staff. This is my third attempt at an LCP update in the 20 years I've lived in Half Moon Bay. So it is—in contrast, the Coastal Commission staff that is working on this is almost completely turned over over this period of time. I don't think that—I could be wrong, but I don't think any of them lived through the Pacific Ridge wars, for lack of a better word. And so I think that, you know, the starting place that you're taking with them, which is one of empathy and education, where you're listening and they're listening, is really constructive. I appreciate it. And instead of reacting strongly one way or another, I'd like to have a chance to see that dialogue settle down a little bit. And, you know, once we have a common basis for information and everybody's working off the same page, I'm hoping that some of the differences will go away. That said, I do have a couple of comments on that letter. I appreciate that there is stuff in the Natural Resources chapter that could conceivably be dropped down into some appendix. I think—I have two concerns about that that I want to be sure we cover. One of them is that the—in some ways, the local coastal program has kind of been a backstop for the Endangered Species Act and the California Endangered Species Act. As you know, the Endangered Species Act is experiencing some regulatory tension, we'll call it. And I understand that the governor is giving some consideration to what the appropriate actions is—are with respect to SB 1. And so I want to be sure that as we're thinking through those decisions about what to move, that paroxysms in state and federal law do not lead to instability in our planning and a diversion from the values of the community has held dear. They also made recommendations with respect to the hazards chapter that I wanted to pick up on. This was the section where they were saying that, you know, we should reorder stuff and there'd be a— they were saying that, you know, we should reorder stuff, and there'd be like things that were related to shoreline processes, and there'd be things related to inland processes. And I don't think that it's contrary to our staff's understanding, and I don't think it's contrary to yours, that many of the processes at the shoreline are the culmination of processes that are happening inland. So if you have a drainage in the upland areas and it's coming down the hill, it comes out at the coast. It may come out through a river or through a water course or through groundwater, but it eventually comes out. And so when we talk about erosion, it is not a powerful distinction that you can draw a line and say, this is where the shoreline process begins and this is where it's, it's inland. Similarly, we can't distinguish between erosion and flooding and sedimentation. They're different phenomena, but they're really three different aspects of geomorphology, right? You get sedimentation if you've got an area where you've planted that's too flat and the soil, the suspended load in the stream is beginning to settle. That impoverishes, that impoverished water is going to pull more soil and aggravate the erosion downstream potentially at the shoreline. And the decisions you make, we make as a, as a body with respect to how to manage flooding has significant impacts. Did we put the culvert in at the right level to achieve that goal or avoid sedimentation? Are we aggravating flanking erosion that's going to change the load? What I'm trying to say is that it's, it's a distinction that makes no sense. We need to think holistically. And I was encouraged by the word holistic that appeared in the Coastal Commission letter, and I'm urging staff to carry that idea in the dialogue with the Coastal Commission on that. And to the extent that, you know, there are other areas, you know, it's safe to say that dammit inundation is sort of initiated inland. It's, you know, earthquakes could be out in the water, you know, it could be in the Pillar Seaters Fault, it could be way off somewhere, so I'm not sure how to distinguish those. I mean, they are seismic, but they can also be related to water, maybe not shoreline processes. So as long as it's not a segue to some future step where the regulatory plan is to jettison inland things and protect shoreline things, I don't mind the reorganization. But I think it's important for us to bear in mind that the Coastal Act calls us as a city to protect the coastal zone, not just the shoreline. So we aren't doing our job if we accept a coastal plan that doesn't do that. I thought that the comments about energy were interesting. I think that might work. With respect to the buffers, I'm torn, to be honest. You know, as I think Rick sort of implied, I think his comments hearken to Einstein's comment about things that should be made as simple as possible but no simpler. And the challenge with buffers is that the same stream in, you know, the same size stream with the same amount of water might have very different buffer requirements depending on, you know, what the soil is in that area, what have, you know, what species live there. The requirements for particular species may be different with respect to what's nearby in that area, what might constitute dispersal corridor. So the idea that we might have one size fits all is clearly not where staff is headed in the dialogue. But in communicating with the Coastal Commission, I want to be sure that we, that the nuance of the problem is clear. Because just saying it's too complicated, can't we just have one, would be really hard to make effective and supportive finding that we are protecting coastal resources. Because that's one of the, one of the things we're charged to do under the Coastal Act and our LCP. With respect to the planned developments, clearly, there's a lot more dialogue that needs to take place. I kind of like the direction that staff is thinking. I think former Mayor Ferrera does a nice job of summarizing that there may be some history that our staff, let alone the Coastal Commission staff, may not be fully steeped in. And I want to be sure that, you know, as we go forward, thinking about how those work, that we've anticipated that stuff and we know where we want to go, so that we're not introducing perturbations that might not be what we had originally hoped. But with that said, I'm open to it. I think when we have areas that are well-developed, and if there's ways that we can make smart decisions about how to finalize those. I remember the, a letter from the Committee for Green Foothills on that subject, perhaps a year or two ago. It might be good to look back at that and see how close that is to what, to what the Coastal Commission had in mind. And also to review that with people in the area who might have concerns. You know, if I lived in one of those areas, I'd probably see this as a double-edged sword. So it'll be interesting to hear how, how they feel about it. I think it's, I don't think that the urban reserve, open space reserve question is ripe yet for a comment. It's interesting, but there, you know, until it's clear what exactly we would do with it, I'm, I'm interested, but I want to hold back a little bit. With respect to the discussion on housing, the priority workforce housing or priority housing, my only comment was in the earlier iterations, we went to some pains when we talked about the densities, to be sure that any bonuses were baked into the numbers that we were presenting. And I realize that was a very high-level slide, but I want to be sure we don't lose that. And so members of the public who are considering what we're talking about ought to understand that what they see in the plan is what they get, not that plus some more. Because that's how they're going to think about it. I thought another interesting idea came up tonight. Greg, thank you for bringing that. We, we heard comments in the public about the challenge of working with lots that were in separate ownership. To me, your, your comment was sort of a specific instance of that. And I certainly encourage you to talk with staff and try to, you know, present your idea a way they can think about it more, not about your project, but just as an abstract level of idea. And I hope that that will, there'll be some, some fruitful thoughts about that. I was intrigued. With respect to Carter Hill, notwithstanding the question of should it be a PD or should it be something else, the public's works, the public work aspect reminded me that there's a lot we don't know about the quantity and condition of the tanks on Carter Hill and their vulnerability in the event of a substantial fire or an earthquake. And I don't remember if we talked much about that in the hazard element, but I think it probably bears, you know, it's somewhere between public works and hazards, and I don't know exactly where. But I think it makes sense to know. Because it's no good to have an adequate water supply if it, if it falls down or melts or something. And I'm not assuming that it does. I don't know. Let's see. The last comment I'd make about the priority housing is one that you have heard me make before. And that is that in the environmental, in the, in the environmental protection or habitat protection community, there's a special section at their meetings that they get together and they talk and they, they tell each other about the projects that seemed like a good idea at the time, but ended up being just dumpster fire failures. And I think that that, the value of that, first of all, it gives you humility, so you know you're not as smart as you thought you were. But I think we also have a natural tendency to learn the most from our mistakes. That's unfortunately how we're wired. And you know, I'm not looking to diss the housing advocacy community. It's incredibly important. But I think it's really important to understand the failures as well as the successes. That's going to give us the tools we need to know what to avoid. It gives us an experience curve to climb up. And I'd be very grateful for that insight somehow to be delivered. And I realize that it's politically, you know, might be politically embarrassing. The environmental protection community has been dealing with that political embarrassment for many years. I'd like to see the housing community become as comfortable with that. I hope they can. Let's see. Bear with me for a moment. Also in the discussion of PDs, and I'm not giving the right, I don't know what the right answers are advocating for something, but we talked about fallback zoning. And I don't know what the ramifications for fallback zoning would be. I do think that the challenge of doing the public works planning to understand the demand that our public works has to support really needed that level of thinking. And I commend you for going through that effort. I know staff did a heck of a lot of work to get there. And if, if we're going to, if the choice or the recommendation of the, of the commission going forward is to say to the city council, we think that should be pulled out of the draft at that level, at least for some PDs, I want to be clear about how we preserve that thinking that led us to a conclusion about what the quantity of public works required is. And, you know, or put another way, how do we do a good, how does the Coastal Commission think we do a good job of estimating our public works without some version of that, you know? And if so, where do we document it if it doesn't belong in the plan? If it goes to an appendix somewhere, great, you know? But I, I want to be sure that we are operating, you know, we're called on to have a consistent plan, and the pieces, they need to fit together. Let's see. They also had a comment about removing programmatic policies. And I know that idea is kind of, needs to be, it needs to be fully baked. I don't, maybe they understood it, but I didn't understand it when I read it. Policies about doing sidewalk studies or, you know, something like that, okay, I could see that going out to a circulation element outside of the LCP. A policy, a policy that says, we need to study groundwater and the impacts of, you know, wells on groundwater and riparian corridors feels to me like it belongs in the LCP. It speaks directly to our ability to protect coastal resources. And if we don't have that in the LCP, I, it would be hard to say we're doing our job. I think it's a good call about Upper Grandview and Quincre, so I'll just come down on that one. I think you're making the right decision about that. With respect to the ways that other PDs develop, I've said before, and I will say again, that I believe that the drainages in those areas are the critical understudied infrastructure item. And whenever we pull back, we need to be sure that we have a breadcrumb that's going to let us be sure we understand that along with the other aspects of capacity. We think of roads, we think of water, we think of sewer, you know, we think of schools, but we need to think of, you know, and we need to think of drainage. Because, you know, Seymour is a poster child of what happens when you don't. And I can think of plenty of other examples. So let's not go there again if we don't have to. I like the food security idea that Mr. Salome brought to the table. I'm not sure how it fits into the LCP. I'll let staff, you know, ponder that. But I think that, you know, climate change is a thing. And we need to, you know, if we're planning for 20 years, we need to think about this. 20 years is not so far out that we shouldn't be thinking about this. Maybe next year, we don't have to worry. But who knows where we are 20 years from now. I've been pretty long-winded. Sorry about that. That same neighbor who brought up the benches for senior access also expressed a concern about the relative velocity of people who are using the coastal trail. This is a point that Commissioner Evans brought to the table a few years ago, and I thought it was well-placed then. I think it's well-placed now, that if you're, you know, a bicycle or, and I think this is something that Commissioner Holt has also spoken to, and Commissioner Hernandez, I believe. You know, if you're on a bike, you're experiencing the trail at a different rate of speed. And finding ways to manage that as an impact seems like it's relative, relevant to coastal access What am I missing? Anybody else want to take a turn? Will I reload? Commissioner Pogar?
Thank you. Actually, in reflecting on some of the comments that Commissioner Benjamin just made, I, I actually would push back a little, or maybe not push back, but my take on the hazards, for instance, is that I didn't necessarily see that the, there would be a loss of holistic, the capacity to look at hazards holistically by grouping them because of the kind of purview of what these policies can do, essentially. So I, while I, the points that Commissioner Benjamin raises are very important. I didn't necessarily see that there would be that implication by separating or regrouping them based on the feedback from the Coastal Commission. I also do feel that the feedback that was provided about Esha and being, simplifying the buffers is, is important to, to provide certainty and a more clear path forward for developers. I think that it's completely reasonable to have a minimum buffer or if, if you need be, a couple minimum buffers depending on what you're talking about. But it, that is, is a better place to start. And then, as the, I think the commissions, Coastal Commission's letter and others, many have said in here, is that then you, the site-specific analysis would be, that's where you refine it, more or less, whatever. But I, I think that that's totally appropriate because it is pretty complicated, based on my reading of it. And I completely support and, and I would say that Commissioner Benjamin's right on about the drainages are really that critical, understudied infrastructure that has such an implication for development choices and impacts in these areas that are undeveloped. And, you know, so I think that's very, very important. And it will only become more so as we see with climate change, as, as our storms come in flashier and we have higher high tides at the same time as we get these big rushes of water coming down. And I do think, I mean, they are definitely linked in terms of sedimentation and all sorts of things. But I just, I think that it's, you know, when you're looking at a, an area, understanding that is so essential and thinking forward on what's likely to happen, in worst-case scenario, will probably happen. So I just thought you were right on with that, and I wanted to echo that. I did have one other thing that, do you mind if I?
Not at all.
Okay. There was one other thing. Oh, I also was very interested when, in Mr. Ferrara's comment about the, the connections versus the quantity, in that, in that, I think that's important to understand, even though I realize it's not consistent with the mid-coast or the, the county, you know, numbers or, or metric. I think still for us, it's very important because that's a reality check on what we actually have in terms of connect, availability. And it's more meaningful for other parts of the discussion. So I, I thought that was a very good, very good feedback. And then lastly, I, you know, in rereading the comments from the Committee for Green Foothills, raised a lot of really good questions that I'm looking forward to hearing staff and our, you know, the legal counsel's input on, because there were some really interesting points and questions and ideas in that. points and questions and ideas in that. So I just wanted to point, highlight that because I came away going, ooh, I had lots of question marks and I'd want to know more, so.
So, yeah, and let me just say, I think we're in agreement on everything that you said. If it sounded like you had to push back, then I probably didn't state my position as well as I should have. So I don't think that simply grouping them from into shoreline processes and inland processes gives them less protection. I'm sort of looking ahead, maybe I'm being paranoid to think someone will say, I have a good idea, let's draw the line here. And I, you know, I want to just put a marker in the ground, but I think that's a really bad idea. And I think that your experience in your day job with Pescadero Creek is the, probably the poster child of what happens when you ignore the shoreline, when you pretend the shoreline processes are not informed by inland processes. So I think we are utterly in agreement on that. I also want to pick up on your point about eucalyptus. And I'll just mention that in our zoning ordinance right now in chapter 38, there actually is a policy that discourages, you know, it calls for the reduction, voluntary eradication of, I think eradication is too strong a word, but it discourages blue gum eucalyptus. And so you might have a look just to see if it's the language you like. I mean, we have to deal with the raptor and, you know, there's complexities, but, so I, I should have supported that, I meant to. And there was something else you said that's, my brain is gone now, so I'll have to let it go. But it was, it was really good what you said. So colleagues, anything else? In that case, staff, do you have, you want to bring it in and draw some? Okay, Jill.
Thank you. We would like to take a few minutes because we can answer quite a few of the questions that came up. Brittany has information about camping as a resource-dependent use, so we'll start there.
So to answer your question, Commissioner Pogar, and this has been certified in local coastal programs before by the coastal commission. I meant to come prepared with that exact policy. It's either Los Angeles County or it's, it's somewhere in that area. And I will follow up with you on that, but it, it is not a new concept. It has been done before and can be done really appropriately, you know, with raised platforms or walk-in camping, things that are actually low-impact and are better in nature.
Then I've got an array of items that we, we just want to offer up. First of all, in addition to the zoning code section that Commissioner Benjamin cited, the city actually does not require a tree removal permit for eucalyptus trees. That said, a number of things have to happen before one can come out. And we require nesting surveys, of course, monarch areas and things like that. But they, they are not treated the same way as other heritage trees and native trees. With respect to, oh, this, this one's fun to come back with actually because it's, it will be nice for Commissioner Benjamin to talk to his neighbor. Policy 5-46 in chapter five, Coastal Access and Recreation, page 530, covers both benches and speed-graded trails. And note that those things are also covered in your recently adopted Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, so.
My bad.
It's okay. No, you're good because we, we were happy to find it and we couldn't remember and so that's always a good little dig. Couple more easy ones and then a couple hard ones. The question from Mr. Jameson regarding the R2 properties, I think was a little bit more nuanced. It was really more, I believe, about having flexibility to maybe have zero lot lines and other things like that. It wasn't necessarily about different ownerships. And I'm guessing this because he and I have discussed this before. And there's actually a, a permit idea in your draft plan on page 2-16 that anticipated this kind of situation. We called it a planned area development permit. It's a place where maybe something like Amesport Landing could develop without being in a PD. It's a, it's a kind of development that doesn't really conform to any of the setbacks of any of the zoning, but if it had a base zone of R2 and this kind of a permit could come on top of it, you could allow a different kind of subdivision, you could allow aerospace condo units. It's actually a little bit unusual that the zoning code doesn't have a tool for this right now. This is really standard fare in other zoning codes. So your staff put this in here because we, we want to be able to, to do these kinds of things without a grandiose PD process. So that is kind of nice because it illustrated why that is in your code. You might not have, or in this draft text, you might not have seen how it, how it plays out. Regarding documentation of the PD build-out and what to do about infrastructure planning, we are, that, that was a really nice conversation we had today with coastal commission staff. We hope to be able to give you some good summaries of how to deal with that and that's a priority of ours. ADUs in PDs, Mr. Ferrara is correct, the way our zoning code is written right now, the PD zoning designation currently does not provide for ADUs, only certain residential areas as well as some of the mixed-use areas where single-family can occur. And if, if those areas were rezoned into a residential category, state law would impose that requirement. He's, he's exactly correct. That said, it may happen anyway and we're tracking that because like I already mentioned, the HOA restriction has already been removed. These areas that are in planned unit developments are PDs that are substantially developed as residential areas. It may become difficult to make an argument that they aren't actually residentially zoned, even though it isn't an R-zone because the PD's all about residential. So that's something that we've discussed with the city attorney. We watch all this state legislation go through. We understand what the, what city council directed in the ADU ordinance and Mr. Ferrara is exactly correct, they did not want to include them. We're just noting, and the proposals and ideas about PDs for those two areas came from the coastal commission's letter. And so we're, we're trying to cope with that and show you what the implications of that are. That, that is not something that we, we brought up out of the blue on purpose. Water connections versus water supply. It's really important to understand that both of those things need to be looked at. There needs to be enough water, absolutely fundamental. And we worked really hard on that math and we used a million gallon per year factor for that, which is different than what the county used, which was a million gallons per day. We clearly can divide our number by 365 and we will have a million gallons per day, it will be an average, and that's exactly what they use. The helpfulness of that is that then you can compare apples to apples with the county's LCP. We use million gallons per day because that's what's in CCWD's Urban Water Management Plan. It doesn't matter. We don't, we don't care. It's the same thing for the, the purpose of that really high-level round number, is there enough water discussion? Water connections, we agree, we, we have some more work to do on that. We've, we've done some study of it. It's, it's difficult to do what was asked for and it's exactly what we want to do, which is understand how the supply of 5/8-inch connections serves the build-out. And we also agree, there are not enough of them. And I do believe we say that real clearly in, in the Public Works chapter with respect to non-priority uses. So I think we're on the same page and we've done as much of the math as we can get inputs for, and we'll see if we can get more on that. But that's, that's our sum-up from your discussion. I hope that's helpful and thank you for letting us do that.
Thank you very much. And, you know, I'm sure the commission understands, but just to be sure the public is aware, we're, you're still sifting through the comments and we're going to get some detailed responses to the comments that you received by the 15th, the 13th comments. You're going to be, there, there aren't so many, so there are a ton. That was a joke. And so we'll all get a chance to look at what they're thinking and what they're saying. So stay tuned and let's see what comes out of that. So thank you again for your comments. If there are no others, I would entertain a motion to continue this item to the October 8th.
I make a motion to continue the item to October 8th.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So that concludes the discussion on the local coastal plan update. The next item is agenda item 1B. This is a coastal development permit and update on the Poplar Beach Gateway Plan. And, oh, so for the pleasure of the commission, we're going to adjourn for five minutes. We'll be back in five. We'll be back in five. Okay, got it. Okay. We're getting close. Okay, we are back in order. The next item on the Planning Commission agenda is Item 1B, to receive an update on the Poplar Beach Gateway Plan and to consider adopting a resolution to approve PDP 1935. And this will be presented by Jill.
By me.
Brittany, I'm sorry. I can't see which direction she was pointing.
That's all right.
Got it. Brittany, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so a quick overview. I will provide some background on the project, including how it relates to our Poplar Beach Gateways Plan, go through the project details, give you an opportunity for clarifying questions before public comment and Planning Commission discussion. So the Poplar Beach Bluff Top Park area includes the city-owned parcels outlined in red here between Poplar Street and Kelly Avenue. And the city has been working on studying this area for some time, including in the sea level rise vulnerability assessment and the subsequent 2017 report on erosion conditions and trail planning. The 2017 study identified multiple causes of bluff erosion, including informal trail use on the bluff tops and the need for trail retreat and managed access to address those causes of erosion, as will be accelerated by sea level rise. So this led to the Poplar Beach Gateways Plan, which has primary goals of long-term erosion and drainage control, coastal trail retreat, habitat enhancement, and access and recreation facilities and improvements for user experience. The development of this plan is well underway. We are currently reviewing an administrative draft of the plan. We anticipate releasing this first draft next month and finalizing it in December, and then beginning Sequo work in January 2020. So you can expect us to be coming back to you with a notice of preparation first quarter of 2020. So during this planning effort for the Gateways Plan, the city has identified several immediate needs that some have been addressed through emergency CDPs that have been reported out to you earlier this year. And the heavy winter rain events caused pretty drastic erosion that really accelerated the need to replace this corroding drainage pipe that you see on the left there and to place temporary safety fencing along the bluff edges. So the project before you today is a follow-up to these two emergency CDPs, as well as an interim to implementing the Gateways Plan, which will include a more long-term look and solution for access along Poplar Beach and to Poplar Beach. So going through the project details of this coastal development permit, the project includes access and drainage improvements to the Poplar Beach Access Ramp that you can see in the photo here. And the access improvements include wooden steps, a cable handrail, and a stepped concrete landing. And the drainage improvements include a V-ditch that will follow along the bluff side to control runoff. Everything will be done within the existing disturbed footprint that is pretty clear from this photo. And a couple construction details, there will be minor grading and compaction to achieve the maximum 20% slope for safe stepping down. There will be standard construction BMPs, including erosion and sediment control, and staging and storage will occur in the disturbed paved parking lot area. So the access ramp is located on the side of a sea cliff, which is defined as ESHA in the city's LCP. And although the scope of this project might typically qualify as a CDP exemption or a CDP waiver if the city had such a process in place, the project location on a sea cliff necessitates a CDP. However, the LCP does allow certain permitted uses in sea cliff areas, including pedestrian trails, stairways, and limited grading, as is proposed. The access ramp improvements will occur entirely within the footprint that can be seen in this photo and will not increase the intensity of use of the accessway. It is intended just to improve the safety and drainage. So in the larger Poplar Beach Bluff Top area, the preliminary bio study done for the Gateways Plan identified several special species in the larger vicinity, including perennial goldfields, coarse popcorn flower, and the red-legged frog, as well as suitable habitat for a number of winter foraging birds and raptors. However, the specific project site that's circled in blue there and does not include any of these suitable habitats for these special species or the species themselves. And the project footprint is limited to the previously disturbed ramp area, as mentioned. We've consulted with both the Coastal Commission staff and the Poplar Gateways biologists, and both helped us reach the conclusion that additional biological assessment was not necessary due to the really limited scope of this project and the limited footprint, and that exclusionary fencing for a red-legged frog is not necessary due to the absence of their preferred habitat type and their nocturnal movement patterns. So as you can see here in this aerial, construction staging and storage will be limited to the paved parking area, as I mentioned. Conditions of approval require minimizing the occupancy of public parking spaces to the extent feasible. The construction crew and equipment can access the project site via the previously disturbed pathway from the parking lot to the access ramp without impeding access to the coastal trail, which is another condition of approval. And the project itself will not involve any vegetation removal or disturbance and will mark the limits of construction with fencing prior to commencement of construction per another condition of approval. So the project is consistent with the public access policies of the city's LCP, as it will enhance and preserve public beach access and recreation through the safety improvements. Construction of the project will cause temporary impacts, no more than three weeks, which is necessary to allow the concrete to set. Equestrian access has come up. The Seahorse Ranch operation used to use this ramp as a primary access for their horseback riding tours. They now use a site that's further north, referred to as the slot. The city has extensively discussed access management and their contract through the city with Seahorse Ranch on ways to limit user conflicts. We find that this improvement will really direct their access north where it's more appropriate, and this stairway will serve the pedestrians that are the heavy users of this site. We will continue the conversations with the equestrian community. We can discuss signage that will direct them to the slot. But really, we're just avoiding this user conflict and looking for safety improvements for pedestrians in this location. Visual resources. And the project is consistent with the visual resource policies of the city's LCP because it is not actually a defined visual resource area, which surprised both of us, but it is in an area that meets the intent of these policies. It provides broad ocean views. It's a scenic coastal access route. So we did look at those policies under that consideration, and there are no obstruction of ocean views or above-grade structural development that would cause any harm to the scenic quality of the area. The project is designed with a natural look, with the wooden steps, and is intended to be subordinate to the surroundings. We find the project categorically exempt from Sequo under Section 15301(c), which permits minor alteration to existing public facilities, including pedestrian trails. Your staff evaluated potential environmental impacts through an environmental checklist as an additional exercise to support this categorical exemption due to the potentially sensitive location of the project on a sea cliff, and found no evidence that any significant environmental impacts or unusual circumstances will occur. And in closing, the project is intended to improve environmental conditions through the public safety and drainage improvements. So to summarize, this is a follow-up to the two emergency CDP actions for the Poplar area that you saw earlier this year. This is a very essential public safety improvement that we've been working closely with our Public Works Department on. The project conforms to the local coastal program and is consistent with the long-term goals of the Poplar Beach Gateways Plan. Staff recommends approval of PDP 19035 and is available for any additional questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Clarifying questions before we have the public hearing? Yes, Commissioner Hernandez?
I appreciate the work you've done here. Thank you for the report. Very supportive of what you guys are doing. As we're removing horse access in an area by putting in steps, which by the way, I strongly support, at the same time in the future, we have a consideration to add more horse-trailer parking in Poplar Lot. It just seems like you're not really, you don't really need to have horse parking right there if you've also explicitly removed horse access. You might encourage people to park in Francis State Beach, where it's actually closer to the slot and much more accessible. So it's just, I would like your thoughts on, have you guys taken that into consideration as you're thinking through the design here in the future?
Anyone else with clarifying questions, or does staff wish to respond? Got the idea? Okay, it was a comment. Questions?
Yes, I wanted to, maybe I missed this. What is expected longevity of the steps? I think we might call on our Public Works Director, John Doughty here.
I only wish I knew.
But that's totally acceptable.
How's that for honesty tonight, all right? You know, we, here's the answer, the best we can give it. We are confident that we are going to get five to 10, five years. We're hoping for anywhere from five to seven and a maximum 10, if we're really, really lucky. But I, but at this point, as we look at our plans and we're working on the Gateways project, if we can buy ourselves five to seven years with this project, and the cost that we're looking at, which is pretty reasonable, I think we'd all be considering ourselves lucky and be happy with that.
One more question. So at the base of the stairs, or the steps going down, is it correct that that's going to be like a concrete plat, you know, the bottom of stairs are kind of a concrete landing, basically?
The very bottom is a piece of, basically a piece of concrete.
Okay.
That'll be poured in place, and that really is designed to hold the rest of the stair system in place. We are not, we had looked at earlier designs to look at perhaps making that a step down into the beach area even with concrete and moving that forward. That became of concern just simply because you've got sand underneath that that's very unstable. And frankly, we also were pretty clear from the Coastal Commission that they wanted us to stay within the framework of the existing impacted area and outside of that, so.
So is it my understanding that that platform or landing is on, is it on bedrock? Is that?
There is nothing that's bedrock.
Okay.
It's at least compact.
Well, it says that in the.
Well, you know, it's on the compacted sandstone there that, as much as you're going to get it.
The max you're going to get, okay.
And thankfully, the wave run-up only occasionally reaches to that point. I don't know, you're local there, you guys know what that looks like.
I would, yeah, I definitely.
But that was the concern. If we pushed down below that point, we were right in the wave and run-up, and that was going to be problematic. Any questions, Steve?
While you're there, John, do I assume that when we say this will be compatible with the Poplar Beach Gateway Plan, even though the plan isn't final yet, that that means that this won't be scrapped in favor of some other scheme on that ramp? We'll be fiscally responsible in terms of putting this in, and as you say, that hopefully will serve us for five years?
I think that I can comfortably say that we will not scrap this work and this project and replace that with something else. Just the timing that it will take, first and foremost, wouldn't allow it. But the permitting cost, the permitting time, and the challenges of figuring out what the future of that vertical access for the long haul is going to be a long and challenging road in terms of how we approach that. Again, I think the objective for a lot of parties, and as we look at the Gateways Project itself, is to try to get the access and the best possible access and as close to disabled access as we possibly can in the long haul. This gets us a step closer, pun intended, but it is certainly not anywhere near that point, and I think the objective would be to try to get closer to that in the longer haul. But we have looked at the plans and we've looked at our work from the engineers, and if erosion continues, we will be looking at that area completely gone in the 2050 kind of range. So, you know, as we look, we're trying to figure out what could we replace that vertical axis with something that could be relocated, for example, and moved back as erosion occurs so we're not continuing to invest in everything each and every time. Just a thought. That's why this is going to be a longer term, and I hope that technology catches up with the need for adaptation and resilience efforts that we're going to be faced in this area.
Oh, that makes sense. Just one detail, what happens to that V-ditch at the foot of the ramp?
It, you know, obviously there'd be some energy dissipation there, and then, you know, the idea that will, the water is already reaching to that point and dealing with that, and it disperses out to, basically to the beach area from that point and deal with that. There's not much we can do other than that, particularly. There's not much we can, we can do other than that, particularly since we're obligated to stay within the bluff area and the impacted area that we're dealing with, so.
Of course. So that'll be, that'll end up to the south of the concrete steps?
Yeah. And some of that's going to be just some site, on this, on the site during the project, sort of making that work and deal with it. That's the reality of some of that fine detail work. It can only be done once you sort of figure out what's happening and you're chasing sort of the issues there with some of the erosion and some of the things that occur around there.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Pogar? He answered your question. Mr. Hernandez?
I just want to clarify, you mentioned that the concrete footing is going to support the stair structure. At least that's what I heard you say. Is that, and looking at the design here, this seems like you're embedding steps directly into the ground. Could you clarify?
So let me clarify. It's, it's not a direct, it's not, it's not a direct, because we don't have surcharging of those stairs on that, on that bottom portion. So from that perspective, it's not a direct support, but there is an element of support that comes from just stabilizing that bottom area because if we don't do some kind of stabilization, we're going to continue to erode that and that will put pressure on the, on those stairs above. These, the stakes and those posts should hold that in place and deal with it, but there is a feeling from the, from again, our design engineers that putting that concrete down there will help stabilize that from that perspective. But there is no real direct surcharge to, to that from above.
Got it. You're not going to put some kind of superstructure with steps with like crawl space or empty space underneath it? And the reason why I'm asking that question is, I was at Gray Whale Cove for a beach cleanup and they have the raised steps and there's about four tons of garbage that's accrued underneath the steps. I just want to make sure, as we have lots of beach visitors who aren't always so careful, we're not creating a crawl space that's going to be difficult to get garbage out of.
Well, that's not intended. I say that if you've been to Kenyatta Cove, down below there, the, the wave run-up there and the storm surge has created a void underneath there and you could certainly pack many tons of garbage underneath there right now. But with the help of Jill and Brittany and our crew there, we're actually going to be filling that void with an epoxy material in the coming couple of months, probably the first of November, and filling that and stabilizing the landing. So I say, I say that only from the perspective, we didn't intend to have a void there and we do have one and we're, our objective is to not have one here.
I was talking about Gray Whale Cove, not Kenyatta Cove, but that's.
I understand that, but, but since that's in the city limits, I can talk to both issues unfortunately.
Couple of questions. So first, so does, does the project include conditions that at the end of its useful life or if it becomes a hazard, we're on the hook to take it out?
I'd have to defer, those are.
Or do we need, do we need that condition?
You know, I don't know that you, I don't, I don't know that you need it simply because it's a public improvement and a, and a public asset, unlike I think what the Commission has done at times where it was a private party and private project. However, if the Commission so desired, you could certainly put a time limit on it and we'd be perfectly happy with that to evaluate it and deal with it. It's not a huge issue.
It wasn't, it wasn't an advocacy question, it was just.
No, no. I, I, it's, it's a legitimate question.
Right.
It, it, I don't think there's a concern about it.
Another question I think, I hope is legitimate, does the project include periodic cleaning of the V ditch?
The conditions don't attach that requirement. There's an obvious element to our basic maintenance and effort of all of our improvements that we do that. Again, if there's a desire to just belt-suspend it, it's perfectly legitimate. Our intention is to do so. But I think it's safe to say that sometimes our best intentions have not been always lived up to and so I'll take some of that with consideration.
Thank you. Could you put back up the overhead shot of the location? Thank you. Yeah, that one, that's great. So there are a couple of different ways people get to that. The right way is to be in the parking lot, kind of come from the south by the picnic tables and then you get out to the, the top of the trail going down. There are a number of informal trails that come from the north that I frequently see people with. Is there anything that we can or should be doing at this time to manage that, to sort of help with the local wayfinding? No, don't take the short step, go around this way.
So let me just say, Commissioner, this actually aerial is a bit out of date and it does not actually reflect some of the revisions that were made of late. So first and foremost, our staff, our maintenance staff placed along that edge to the east of the, along the trail, a split rail fence that blocks access from and to this area so that, that trail that's right kind of in the middle of that ditch and the Usher area there is no longer accessible unless you really want to crawl over the fence and go and deal with it. And that has stopped most of that activity. We also restored back when we did the drainage work and we restored a portion of the area that's to the far left of that photo and also placed the fencing along there. So we have, there is a one opening there and I had been hesitant to completely close it off until we had a conversation about the equestrian side because if you look at that, that is the direct alignment for where the end of the equestrian run is. And so I think this was sort of the process to have a conversation about whether we would just close off that access and make that a clean cut from that point. But this is a bit dated and I think our interest is, is the same as yours, which is to focus access from the, that point at the parking lot and the terminus kind of of the trail at Seymour Street and stop all of this crazy sort of access in the places where we don't want it.
Okay, thank you, John. I think we might need a motion to continue the meeting for a bit. 10:30, sorry, we're good. There will be, we'll get, yeah, point of order was, was there a public comment? The answer will be yes, there will be. No other questions? That time has arrived. Okay.
Hello?
You're there.
Thank you. This is technology.
Get about one fist away.
Commissioner Hernandez's comments about the voids, actually, I was concerned about as well and it sounds like that will not be an issue. However, looking at the cross-section, I would suggest in the design, in the design that the pad, the foundation pad that's going to be at the bottom of this thing, there's an, there should be an aggressive excavation and then instead of a hard corner, there should be a very gentle round at the, at the edges because that'll be a trip hazard as the sand moves up and down the surfaces. This is, this is a minor point and I'm sure it'll be addressed, but there should be, there should be a different strategy instead of the stairs. It should be a different design queue. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission who would like to ruminate. Steve, ruminate.
Well, I think it probably goes without saying, but this is a good project for us to undertake. The comfort and the safety of all, the large number of people who use that is, is really important. I heard an anecdote about a week ago about a lady who was able to walk down the path but turned out she couldn't get back up by herself and had to ask for the kindness of strangers to, to make it off the beach. So, so this is a good thing that we're addressing. I, I think that the question of the horses is an interesting one because there are going to be private equestrian users who are used to once in a while coming to Poplar Beach and going down that ramp and it'll really be incompatible, horses and, and the new steps. So, so we'll have to have the right signage about that and you hate to think of a, a big billboard about it and, and you'd like it to be done cleanly and with aesthetical values, but it, it really needs to be unignorable to the extent possible. We all, or well, most of us have witnessed that Poplar Beach is a very popular party place after hours for a certain number of young people and, and sometimes it's a certain number is a very large number. I worry a little bit about the construction phase, you know, the three weeks when you're going to have concrete setting down there and construction in the works. I wonder if you've thought about how robust the fencing will need to be at both ends of that because people will get down there regardless of, if that path is closed. You know, that, the old, the old creek shed to the south of that, what, 200 yards or so? So you'll have people who are not necessarily all sober down there with, with your project in the works and, and I'd say thinking about the fencing and, and the human security element would be worthwhile.
Thank you. Sarah?
I, I'm too, I think this is, I'm fully supportive of this and I have kind of similar concerns about the, the construction period and the setting. I think in addition to the concerns that Commissioner Ruddock raised, I, I think that it's really valuable to put signage in the parking lot at the point where people pay because if they pay for parking and then discover they can't actually get to the beach effectively, they will figure out some other way. And it may even be worthwhile putting the signage like before they even get out of their car, but I don't know. I'm just saying that like the people getting irate will be, they will do whatever they want to do. And in, even in three weeks, it's, I guess it's, it depends on when it happens, but I would assume it has to be sometime, it has to be pretty much in the dry season for concrete to be setting. So I, but I do think that it's possible that enough people could choose different routes that you actually get a new, it, it almost establishes a new casual, really, you know, and causes enough erosion to make a new path that seems like legit, let's put it that way. And that would be very unfortunate. That would also undermine, I, I understood from the description that ideally the drainage improvements that came with the previous emergency CDP and would occur with the V ditch, for instance, for this, you know, they sound totally appropriate and I understand that there'll be additional upland revegetation and other things to make sure that we aren't directing the, you know, concentrating flows towards the stairs and all of that. But it's, it's pretty sad how quickly we can get new concentration of, of flows with people doing the casual trails and starting a new erosion. And along those lines, unfortunately, I think the slot is becoming the slots. And that is because people are, a friend of mine said, people are voting with their feet. And so I'm not saying, like, I'm just, it's, this is just acknowledging the reality. I, I think it's perfectly fine for equestrian users to go a little further down the trail. I mean, it's, this is different than saying, oh, we're going to provide access for people and pedestrians or, you know, who are trying, have, that's a long ways to go. On a horse, I'm not sure that's such a long ways to go further north to the slot. And the number of users we're talking, sending there, the, that's very different than the commercial horse usage. The challenge is that the, the way down at the slot has become not so pleasant in, if you're walking, because it's got a lot of horse poop. And so people are making new paths down to avoid the horse poop. And so that's what I mean when I say the slot is becoming the slots and the erosion there is horrible. This project is not the, the change in moving, you know, a couple of users from this, this access point to the slot, that's not making the difference. That's not the, so I'm, this project doesn't need to deal with that. I'm just pointing this out because it's reality. And I, and I get it, like I, I would walk down the, I don't, I don't know, I haven't gone down that spot in years, but I would also not want to walk on the poop. So anyways, just a point that that's happening. I really think that the, figuring out how to manage during the construction is going to be a bit of a challenge. And there are definitely going to be inebriated people who could get injured. And then, what was the other thing I was gonna, oh boy. Well, yep, I'm sorry.
Very supportive of the project. I think it's a much-needed improvement. I do think that, just as you think about the design, you get a lot of foot traffic there from the north and from the south. People approach it from lots of different angles, people with dogs. I know you'll appreciate that, so just things to take, monitor the traffic. I do think, I, I don't know how long the trail or the access point is going to be closed. If it's a three-week time period where access to Poplar Beach is closed, that's gonna, it's gonna contribute to erosion. So do whatever you can to get in and get out as quickly as possible. I think that would really address Commissioner Pogar's concerns. And then in the short term, would love to see some volleyball courts put up as an interim thing. I know it's been talked about, but you know, there's an opportunity there in the non-wildlife area. I'll just say, every time Poplar Gateways comes up, people ask about that and every weekend I've got the volleyball coaches asking me, when are we going to put beach volleyball in? So anyway.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of comments, Alless, did you, did it come to you? Commissioner Pogar, back we go.
Actually, there's one other thing, the lot of the, a lot, some of, in coastal, at the coastal cleanup event this past Saturday, there were definitely a couple of the fence posts that were found down on the beach that people were trying, I don't know if they, some of them they successfully partially burned. But, so I just wanted to clarify how well-secured the steps would be because they're going to be wood and they'll be the nearest, easiest thing for people to try to rip off of and like put into, in their bonfires. And so I just wanted to find out if that, I don't know if you can prevent that, but it seems like that would be a, it would be good to not have that happen.
The things you think you'd never have to answer questions for. But I mean, certainly we're going to look at what we can and, you know, the handrails are primarily, are not a wood, you know, extended handrails. And so we're, whether we're considering the fire factor or not, that the design actually does address some of that and clearly we're, we're working on, you know, on that issue in a broader perspective. And I, I, you know, I hope maybe in the context of a conversation about, about Poplar Gateways, we'll talk about what we do in the long haul about fires on the beach and things of that nature.
Just to put perspective on this, I once visited a pier in, near, in San Francisco where instead of ripping the pier out to burn it, they just burned it in place. So they just burned it back.
It's good for the fire. The, the fire crews love to do that kind of stuff, so.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Appreciate the orange exclusionary fencing to keep people from falling off the trail and onto the sand below. Can we, in the short term, do something to not make that look like a construction site? The orange exclusionary fencing is pretty ugly and, you know, Disney uses go-away green for structures where, you know, people don't walk into it, but visually you just don't see it. So if you could consider something like that in the short term while you work out the longer-term solution.
Sure. I, I sort of consider the orange and the complaints I get as a mission accomplished, in part because it's, it's also telling people the story, which is that they're, is they're killing that asset and dealing with it. So I also think from a safety perspective, our issues of wanting to be clear about where that edge is, the orange is perhaps a high-visibility color for dealing with that. But it certainly, we'll certainly take a look at. I don't want to have plastic exclusionary fencing there in any event. I don't want to have plastic exclusionary fencing there in any event in the long haul. Let's figure out something to do so we don't have that, whatever color is the wrong color.
I'm supportive of more split-rail fencing.
Yeah.
Like, just, let's just move on.
And that's what I think we really are going to be looking at. Again, we're, we're struggling with the issue of wanting to move forward on some of these things while also acknowledging and allowing the gateways process to, to move forward with the community to weigh in on many issues and factors. So this is, this is the challenge in the balancing act that we're, we're dealing with. So they're having to restrain me sometimes from, from the desire to go ahead and start to build the fence out there, because I get so frustrated with just the, the safety aspects of it, you know, and the issues of the additional slots.
So let me segue on both Rick and Sarah's point, since I live in a place with split, with split-rail fencing nearby. I can tell you, A, it gets burned, and B, even if it doesn't get burned, it gets, it gets kicked down because it's fun to kick it down. So I think that this deserves some thought. I think orange is the worst possible choice, except for everything else. I had a couple of, just a couple of comments. First, I, and I apologize if I missed a condition, but I think if, is there a condition that says we're going to remove it at the end of its useful life, or if it becomes a hazard?
Not currently.
Would it be okay if we added one?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think we need a condition on maintenance. Like, I'm sure that our staff wouldn't go down with a spray gun to clear, to jet out the V ditch, you know. But I do think between it and the compaction and a bobcat going down, remember the bobcat going over, or a mower going over the Hernandez Bridge is what took that out. So I worry about unintended consequences, that nothing like that will happen, that compaction isn't going to cause the side of the bluff to drop off because of the vibrations. But, you know, it's going to begin processes, and I want to be sure that we're monitoring them, so that we're picking up challenges. I don't know what the right language for monitoring is, but, you know, if it becomes unsafe, we want to mitigate or want to do something, and we don't want to miss it. I, I do think signage is appropriate. I like the idea of a temporary sign saying, hey, you can't go down right now near the pay station. I also think, you know, it used to be that when you entered the state park from adjacent neighborhoods, there was a very discreet sign, maybe I'd say four inches by maybe eight inches, that said, you know, Coastal Access Trail, you are responsible for knowing the rules. And people who don't like rules took that down. And I do think that if, you know, there might be some analog for that. I think we have a policy that actually requires them to be maintained in our existing LCP. I think it was cited in the document. So it makes sense for signage, and I think we need it. I appreciated the public's comment about the trip hazard at the bottom in response to the changing sand levels. I don't know what, you know, if the, if the, if the sandy beach is outside the scope of your project and you can't do anything there, you know, I don't know what you can do, but it would be nice if there is something. So I'm sure you're thinking about that, and we're pondering it. And I think your awareness of the rate of bluff top erosion is admirable. If you have trouble anticipating the future models of behavior, come down to Venice Beach. I'll show you what an eroded access looks like in spades. With respect to the Equestrian Trail close-off question that you invited discussion, it does sound to me like it's time for us to wind that down. I realize that you're in the middle of discussions or renegotiations, so, you know, I'm willing to synchronize, but, you know, having made an investment to try to facilitate the slot, and I mean an investment in terms of sacrificing a bluff, an intact bluff to achieve that, I want to be sure that it, we're not losing our other investments and that we're protecting that investment so that it survives as long as it can. I'm worried about the erosion that Commissioner Pogar brought up. You know, in other kinds of projects, you know, if you're going to block the sidewalk for a while, you get to cross over and there's a flagman saying, don't go here, go there. And we don't seem to have an alternative like that. I guess we can't, like, drop down a temporary ladder and not damage the bluff in another way to give people entrance and egress. But, you know, if there's some easy way to do something that would make it less painful for people and force, you know, show them the answer so that they could find their way down without inventing a new one that's going to create problems, especially if, whatever the project is, if it had temporary impacts that could be mitigated, that might be worth considering. I'm open to my colleagues' thoughts about that.
You know, there's an alternative access point very close by. It's a little steep for people. There's concrete, you know what I'm talking about. So there's a concrete embankment right here that's been built up to protect for erosion. You could probably put a temporary structure there, like handrails or something, to help people get up and down, but I'm not sure you want to do that, but.
I, obviously, we're struggling with the same thing you're struggling with, is how do we deal with maintaining public access to a critical point of enjoyment for so many? Clearly, there is that drop down through the repaired landfill, and some people do that. I won't. I'm just, I'm too old to do it now, I think, to deal with it and feel comfortable. And some people choose to do that now even with that deal, which will be their choice to do so until we decide to do something like close it off. We clearly believe that we're going to have to do a detour and run people down to the slot. Clearly, with our efforts with renegotiating the agreement with Seahorse Ranch, we're interested in making sure that that's clean and dealt with. And just to be clear for the, for you and for the community, we also see the next piece of this in terms of temporary work to do with is stabilizing the slot and coming in and cleaning that up and getting that stabilized and probably putting in wood retaining in that area to keep that from falling and dealing in. Obviously, then there's the issue of the cleanup, and that's kind of a secondary piece to it. But we see that as the next place to go. But in the interim, we see that. We think your comments and recommendations regarding signing early and even at the gate to let people know that, that access is there, I think also will be to direct people to perhaps go to the state parks if they really want access to the beach for this limited period of time. And again, mapping where and how far it is to the slot and what that walk looks like, and also, you know, giving them the alternatives of where to go for that access during this limited period of time is going to be critical. And again, I think the comments regarding needing to really seal up that construction site with heavy-duty fencing and around there and deal with it is, is, is good and wise commentary is just the nature of human beings and where we are. So that's clearly in our, in our process in dealing with this. And the most obvious of this issue is, is that we're trying to make sure we plan for this construction at the best possible time for the least amount of impact, while we still feel that we get the weather window that we need to not have a complete disaster out there, because we went out in the middle of a Pacific storm and started the work. So that's the, that's the challenge that we're having, is finding that sort of balance point of least impact from weather and least impact from usage time.
When are you thinking?
I have a magic eight ball in my office, and I probably need that. We're probably looking at March or so, March to April is the likely point with this. I just don't see us being able to mobilize out much earlier than that and get somebody online. And, and because, and we don't want to be there really in that December, January, February timeframe with, with the storms and storm surge. We're also fighting the issue of when is, when is the high tides and the winter high tides and storm surge so we can be working down there. So we're, we're also challenged with that aspect. So we're, we're worried about the water coming down from above, the water coming from ocean side, and water coming from even the runoff and drainage from, from interior as well. So water is our, is our challenge.
It might not be there if you wait too long.
Understood, too. And certainly, we, this is a long time in coming and something that we've wanted to do for some time. And I'm, you know, I'm sorry it's taken this long. It was, it would have been our preference to, to move this quicker. We just want to do it right.
By the way, I do want to acknowledge the minor improvements you've made by putting the gravel in there and just making the access point easier. We were just there this morning. We're there often. It's definitely an improvement over what was there before. So, thank you.
And we're, just, just to be clear, we did have someone concerned about the gravel itself in that area in terms of accessibility and issues going to the picnic tables. And I think they're right, actually. It's, 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 it needs to be really compacted out. So that's something we'll be looking at doing as well with this and getting that more to a compacted, decomposed granite up there and getting that compacted down so it's not so loose and be more accessible for folks to get in there. Again, no change to the world, except for those who are, have some mobility issues that they feel more comfortable in there.
Okay, let me wrest control of the dialogue again for just a minute. I think we're pretty close. To summarize what I think I heard, I think there's interest on the, and correct me if I get this wrong, you guys. I, a sense that closing out, you know, making it clear that we want to get to where this is, you know, that little access to the north could get closed, and addressing the slot are on the list, but it's not quite ripe for this action. It needs to be part of the conversation with the, with Seahorse Ranch. And, but with respect to clear signage at the conclusion of this project, that equestrians don't belong on this anymore, that's permanent signage that should be there. I heard also signage about the temporary closure that we needed to communicate to people. You don't go down here. If you want to go down to the beach, go over there or go to the slot, but you can't do it here. With creative protections to look after the creative college students or whoever that thinks that's the right way to go down anyway. I heard, I wrote permanent probation, oh, we got that. Oh, and maintenance and monitoring and recognizing that it may need repairs and at the end of its useful life or when it become hazardous, we remove it. We are the applicant, we own that. Anything else? Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve the CDP for this project with the amendment that at the end of its life, the city remove any detritus associated with it and put it in place, appropriate signage, and look at a design that blocks off inappropriate access.
I'll second it.
Staff clear on the motion. Do we have what we need? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Thank you. And we have six minutes to finish the director's report, planning communications, and adjournment.
Thank you. You already have heard about your upcoming meetings on what we're covering October 8th, October 22nd. You have the Greenbrier appeal. October 29th is your joint study session. We're plotting ahead into November and would like to know if the commissioners are going to be available for that Thanksgiving week meeting, and Bridget will send, or you can send to her, she can remind you with an email. I do have the quickest update from the most recent city council meeting just a week ago. It was, a lot of things happened relative to what you do. They adopted the bicycle and pedestrian master plan, including the amendments that you had recommended, and also with language that was included in your motion, as well as to incorporate a study of bicycles, bicycle use in three of those study areas. And then there was an additional change that went past that. It was the Pillar Cidos Creek Trail east of John L. Carter Memorial Park. They decided to take that off of being specified as a project, and they made that a study, similar to how it was treated west of Oak Avenue Park. Under another item, they appointed three members to the new architectural advisory committee, and we will have our initial session looking for October, and we'll let you know how that goes. We have Julie Bardini as the architect, Stephen Kukic, I lost his name, Kukic, is our landscape architect, and Chad Hooker is our resident at-large with design experience. So that is our three-member group. They also approved an amendment to the bylaws so that we can have alternate members if need be, because this is something I've, I've seen it done with other arcs, because these folks are actively practicing in the area, and they have a tendency to have more conflicts than other folks in other boards and commissions, et cetera. So they didn't appoint anybody yet. We're going, we want to see how this is going to work, and we'll give you an update after the first couple of meetings and tell you what's, what's going on with that. And finally, they approved a transfer of 12 Measure D certificates. This is something that's provided for in the Measure D allocation process specified in the subdivision ordinance. It can be done after September. They approved 12 from inside downtown to outside downtown. It was about half of those base certificates, only to be used for accessory dwelling units. And that's the update, and we do have kind of an end-of-the-meeting, late-breaking thing that Bridget's going to take care of in a minute, but other than that, that's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commission members, anybody have any questions on that?
No questions, just a planning commission communication item.
It's time for planning communication items.
Again, general interest from the volleyball community when volleyball courts are going to be put out. I just have to get that in there, because I'm getting pelted with the question every weekend.
Thank you. Any other planning commission communications? If not, may I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, wait, there's more.
I make a motion that we defer to Bridget.
All right, a motion that Bridget has the floor.
I am not adjourned quite yet. So, two things. We have a commissioner's birthday, so, and then we also, so we wanted to celebrate that as well as celebrating our two ad hoc committee members and thanking them for all the hard work that they've been putting on for the last two years for meeting with Jill and doing that. So we have a little something for, for you guys.
All right. Thank you very much. Rick and I both thank you. And now we'll, we'll entertain that motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll take a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and good night. That was sweet. Thank you very much.